Welcome and thank you for being with us tonight, October 2nd, for the Berkeley City Council District 6 Candidate Forum. My name is Jo Loss of the League of Women Voters of the Eden area. The League of Women Voters is a nonpartisan organization that encourages active and informed participation in government. We do not support or oppose candidates or parties. The advocacy arm of the League may take positions on issues such as ballot measures. However, this forum is presented by the Voter Services and Education Arm of the League, which does not take positions or advocate for them. We'd like to acknowledge that we are at the beginning of the Jewish New Year, and some members of our community will not be able to view the live forum. The League offered scheduling and technical accommodations to candidates before we scheduled this fall's forums. That said, we will avoid having forums and events on holidays in the future and continue efforts to ensure our programming as inclusive as possible. As we get started, I'd like to remind everyone that the candidates have all agreed to participate under the ground rules set for this forum. The ground rules are posted in Eventbrite. Candidates are not permitted to display campaign buttons, T-shirts, signs, Zoom backgrounds, etc., in order to maintain neutrality. This forum is being broadcast on the Berkeley Community Access Channel 33. We are also recording tonight's forum, and the session will be available on our website, l w v b a e dot org, and on our YouTube channel. There are two candidates running for the Berkeley City Council member spot for District 6. They are Andy Katz and Brent Blackaby. The city council makes decisions about local laws and policies for the city using input from the community. The position of city council member is decided through ranked choice voting. Voters can, but are not required to indicate their first and second choice for an office. With ranked choice voting, the candidate who receives the majority of votes will be declared the winner. Your ballot will not be valid if you vote for the same candidate more than once. So let's go over a few ground rules and get started. Each candidate has two minutes for opening remarks. The colored was order was determined by zooming in tonight on our webinar. The timekeeper will signal candidates with a green colored window, which will continue to count down the seconds from 2 minutes to 15 seconds. It'll turn yellow and then red when the full 2 minutes is up. As people signed up via Zoom, they had the opportunity to submit questions. If you have additional questions, you may type them in by clicking the Q and A icon. Our volunteers will take the questions and pass them on to me. All questions will be screened to avoid duplication and personal attacks. The order of answering the questions will be alternated, and each candidate will have one minute to respond to each question. Again, the timekeeper will signal the candidates. There will be no separate rebuttals. However, the candidates may choose to use some or all of their one minute to rebut the response given by another candidate. Following the questions, each candidate will have a two minutes for their closing statement. Now let's begin with our first opening statement, candidate Blackaby.
Good evening. It's great to be here with you, Andy, and with the League of Women Voters. Thanks for organizing this forum tonight. My name is Brent Blackaby, and I'm running for Berkeley City Council to bring fresh ideas, new leadership, and a can-do attitude to solve the problems facing Berkeley: fire safety, housing affordability, home insurance, streets and transportation, public safety, and homelessness. My partner Larry and I have lived in District 6 for 20 years. We're raising our two kids here who attend Berkeley Public Schools. I have deep roots in District 6 and a commitment to making things better because I've been here. I care about our neighborhood. That's why I serve on the Police Accountability Board, why I provide oversight of the Police Department, policies, personnel, and budget. I chaired the Cragmont School Site Council for two years. I co-founded a local group called Make Our Schools Safe, or MOS, focused on school safety across the school district, and currently serve on the Berkeley School District Safety Committee. I'm also organizing 200 of my neighbors in a firewise community for wildfire preparedness. But beyond that local work, I've been active on the state and national level as well. I'm a small business person and founded a leading digital agency for Democrats and progressive causes. I'm proud to have helped elect 20 Democrats to the US Senate, including Barbara Boxer and Elizabeth Warren, and raised more than $100 million for progressive causes. I helped pass ballot initiatives to defend marriage equality, protect a woman's right to choose, fund San Francisco Bay restoration, and ban single-use plastic bags in California. All of that experience, at the local, state, and national level, demonstrates my commitment to actually get things done on important occasions and shows the kind of leader that I am. That's why I'm proud to have received five of the most important endorsements in this race, from our state Senator Nancy Skinner and Assembly Member Buffy Wicks, from our council member Susan Wengrath, from the Berkeley Firefighters and the Berkeley Democratic Club, as well as former US Senator Barbara Boxer and a majority of the Berkeley City Council. They know I'm the right choice for District 6, and I look forward to talking more about my vision and my plans during the discussion tonight. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Candidate Katz, your opening statement, please.
Thank you, Jo, and good evening, League of Women Voters, and good evening, Brent. My name is Andy Katz, and I am running for Berkeley City Council to bring my deep experience over 25 years in public service and city government to solve critical challenges affecting our public health and safety, aging infrastructure, and our environment and quality of life. I've led our public water provider, East Bay Mud, as our elected director to adopt a proactive wildfire prevention strategy, and I've secured the cleanest water in the country, also tripling our rate of pipeline replacement. As our council member, I will fight to prevent wildfires, save local hospital services as Altibates is about to close, and fix our streets. I helped negotiate, as a member of the Labor Commission, Berkeley's minimum wage increase and advanced affordable housing. I'm working closely with our mayor Jesse Arigui and other leaders to save Altibates Hospital or to save our hospital services. As a labor, consumer rights, and environmental attorney, I've sought justice for hundreds of people against abusive corporations and insurance companies. We've seen significant turnover in our city leadership, and now more than ever, experienced leadership is needed to move our city forward. That's why I'm proud to be endorsed by the Democratic Party, Sierra Club, the Alameda Labor Council, Berkeley Mayor Jesse Arigui, and a majority of the Berkeley City Council, former mayor Tom Bates, and former Senator Lonnie Hancock, and many more. And please go to my website, which is at www.andykatz.com for more information. I look forward to the forum here tonight.
Thank you. I didn't mean to cut you off. It's just unusual when a candidate doesn't use all their time. So, okay, take a deep breath. Candidate Katz, you are first on the questions. Your first question is, in your first year, if elected, what do you aim to accomplish for your constituents and community stakeholders?
Thank you for the excellent question. I think it is important to initiate the initiatives, initiate the policies that I expect to see over the long term because some things we will be able to get done in one year, but other things will take time. So in the first year, I would like to be working with every member of the city council to identify how do we help each other on the priorities that affect District 6 that ranges from wildfire prevention to saving our hospital services and fixing our streets. I hope very much that we have a streets measure that passes so that we're able to move forward important elements of the paving plan. I will be meeting with constituents, meeting with neighbors all over the district to ensure that we are identifying the most unsafe parts of our district to make sure that we're fixing our streets and identifying those areas to improve. Advancing wildfire prevention, moving forward, a comprehensive plan to be ready to be able to prevent wildfires with more aggressive education management.
Thank you. Candidate Blackaby.
I agree with Andy. A lot of this will be putting plans in motion for the long term, but I do think there are three things I'd be able to accomplish in the first year. First, I believe in accountability and transparency across the board. I would bring my experience as a small business person, as someone who's data-driven, metrics-driven, to set clear goals and targets for every city department. Measure it, report on it, set up a dashboard that we can release and show people. What are people getting for their money? I think we can do that in the first year. Second thing is, there's already been a plan that Councilmember Wengrath introduced to rebate part of the transfer tax on new home purchases to allow people to invest in home hardening work. I think we'd try and get that passed in that first year. We need to help homeowners finance the work they need to do for fuel reduction and home hardening efforts. And then the third piece of it is, as Andy said, you know, we need to do more work on our streets. We can identify the streets right now in District 6 that need work. There's blocks of Keeler, there's blocks of Grizzly Peak, there's Marin Avenue. We need to add safety and paving to protect our bikers, our pedestrians, and our drivers.
Thank you. And I should mention that the questions are also being put into the chat as I ask them. So we're going to candidate Blackaby now. There are a number of problems confronting our city, including key staff resignations and staff shortages, a failure on the part of the council to consider diverse approaches to solving critical problems, and a lack of kindness. How do you plan to serve as a council member given these apparent mired workplace challenges and finish your term if elected?
Well, look, it's a great question. I agree, a little more kindness across all of our work is important. I think people would attest, people who know me, that that's something that I do. That's a skill that I have. I can work with people from across a wide variety of personalities, wide variety of sort of political interests to try and find common ground and get things done. That's a skill that I have that I would bring to this effort. I'm not going to be ideologically driven by any kind of particular pull. My mission will be trying to get the work done. I also have a super-strong support network, a super-strong family, my partner Larry, and my two kids. They're everything. And on those tough days, and we've all had those tough days, having that kind of support network to rely on and get you back up the next day to go back to work again is really important. I think that's the second thing that I bring to this. And a third, you know, look, I think we do need to work on morale across the city. I think we need to figure out how to recruit people who want to be here and set ambitious goals and excite people about the work that we have. If this streets measure passes, just for an example, we're going to have all sorts of projects and all sorts of things to bring people in to do, and we need to make people excited about the work. Thank you.
Candidate Katz.
I think it's a very important question because the hostile environment among our community, among our community's leadership, affects the morale of our staff all too often. And I think what I look back on is how I've worked to change the culture at East Bay Mud. We have had a very good culture over the years, but as a director, what I found after a very difficult moment over a decade ago, we took a hard look at what our values were. We asked our employees, what are our values? What can we, what do we want to accomplish? What's our vision? And we created a campaign that has really excited East Bay Mud employees to be a part of the district. It made people proud to work where they do. And that's what I would like to bring to the city of Berkeley. I think it will take a lot more than the one minute to answer this question about showing others respect, showing others willingness to collaborate, willingness to compromise, and meeting people for mutual benefit for the citizens of Berkeley.
Thank you. Thank you. Our next question goes to candidate Katz first. What strategies should be prioritized in fighting the climate emergency?
There are a number of strategies. I'll focus on what the city of Berkeley can do. I'm very happy that, and proud of the accomplishment that I was able to work on to form East Bay Clean Energy, which is now Ava, that's our energy provider, providing 100% renewable electricity to ratepayers in the city of Berkeley. That means that the electricity that we get is green and renewable, but we need to move further on electrification. We need to be able to take the pilot program that I worked with the city council to help start that's meant to routinize options for homeowners to be able to change their appliances to be, to use heat pumps and to use electrified appliances for our buildings. And we need to fund it. We need to find an appropriate funding source to be able to ensure that we can accelerate these improvements. We have a lot more to do in the transportation sector. I think encouraging bicycling and transit use is one of the most important things we can do. I've been doing that. I'm proud to be endorsed by our AC Transit Director Gene Walsh and our Director Rebecca Saltzman.
Thank you. Candidate Blackaby.
Well, thank you for the question. If you think about, like, the two largest areas of opportunity here are around our buildings and are around our transportation. So on the building side, again, certainly support the city's work to electrify more and more of our existing buildings as well as to set strong efficiency standards for new building. It's about green materials. It's about encouraging solar, use of solar and implementation of solar panels on new buildings. There's a lot of work we can do on the building side. It's also about transit-oriented development. It's about where you build and how you develop so that people are not commuting as far to get between home and work. But then on the transportation side, it's about encouraging more use of public transportation. It's about encouraging the use of electric vehicles and creating charging stations, about encouraging the use of bicycles and creating new bicycle lanes and fully funding the bicycle plan and the pedestrian plan and the Vision Zero plan that the city has already let out. So again, two key areas around transportation and around building standards.
Thank you. Okay, our next question, and you're 15 minutes into it, gentlemen. You're doing a great job. Candidate Blackaby, what can local officials do, if anything, about the worsening home insurance problem in California?
This is a fantastic question, and I'll tell you, this is what I hear the most when I walk around District 6. I've knocked on 3,000 to 5,000 doors in the district. Everyone's thinking about fire, and everyone is thinking about home insurance. What we can continue to do is encourage our homeowners and people who live here to do the fuel reduction, home hardening work that needs to be done. It's good for safety, and ultimately, it needs to be accounted for in the insurance decision-making and premium-setting process. At the same time, we need to be lobbying like heck, and I have been talking to folks in the Insurance Commissioner's Office to get them to implement the new regulations that Insurance Commissioner Laura has already drafted. They've told us they think by the end of the year, those can be in place. And those do three things. One is, it allows insurers to price insurance based on the forward-looking risk and not the past 20 years of actual claims, which will keep them in the market. Two, we need to make sure they price into that work all of the home hardening and fuel reduction we're doing individually and as a region. And three, we need to set expectations and require them to cover more homes in high-hazard zones. That's how we do it. We need to lobby for that work. Thank you.
Candidate Katz.
It's very important that we have a change in the regulations set by the Department of Insurance to be able to encourage insurers to come back into the market. Insurers are not able to come back into the market if they're not able to recover after a disaster. And so what the Department of Insurance has proposed is a way to be able to do that, to have a forward-looking model that will allow for insurers to be able to participate in the market and not go bankrupt in the event of a disaster. But that's not good enough all on its own. What's important is to make sure that we are actually seeing incentives to be able to do the right thing. I'm very excited to have the city council pass the recent home hardening incentive on the transfer tax. It takes effect next January, and I think we do need to expand that incentive. But at a community level, that will encourage our communities to be safer, but we do need assurances that that will actually be priced into the model. Right now, it's not clear that that will actually happen, and I do hope that that will occur so that we're not paying the price as we get our home insurance options back.
Thank you. So this next question has a new word in it for me that I've never heard before, so I hope it's familiar to you. Candidate Katz, how do you propose hybridizing all commission and standing committee meetings for those who can't attend in person?
I wasn't sure what hybridizing meant until I heard the remainder of the question, but I think that makes sense. So, you know, it's important to be compliant. We have the Brown Act, and that sets certain standards. So while it is, and we also have the Americans with Disabilities Act. And we have seen, I served on the Disaster and Fire Safety Commission, and I am very pleased that we've had members of our community with disabilities who have been able to participate in a hybrid format on the basis of a reasonable accommodation, and that equal access is critical for participation in civic government. Thank you to the League for having this virtual experience, but we do need to make sure that all members of the community can participate. What, so what I do see some constraints because we need the technology to work. If I were to come in with a portable device and the internet were to cease to function, we don't want that to create a Brown Act violation. We need to be very careful about that. So investments in technology and testing that technology, I think, will be the best way to move forward.
Thank you. Candidate Blackaby.
I agree. You know, supporting this work and hybridizing meetings is important for access. I know there's been a recent lawsuit against the city that's been settled as a result of some of the new rules and the accommodations that are being made. It is important to be able to accommodate people of all backgrounds and all mobility status to be able to participate in public meetings. On the Police Accountability Board, we do a lot of work with the technology to make sure that people can participate in person or remotely. You know, commissioners can participate remotely under just cause provisions on a one-off basis. What I like about the new plan is that it allows commissioners who do have challenges disability work that they cannot, basically, they can participate remotely and not do it one by one, but basically say, hey, this is a standard that I need. I need to have this hybrid access on an ongoing basis and have that be accepted and not have to be renewed for every meeting. And I think it's important for the members of public. It's also important for the members of the boards and commissions themselves. Technology is a key part of it, but we can manage it. We already have been managing it.
Thank you. Okay, candidate Blackaby, given that the ban on natural gas hookups in new buildings to mitigate climate change and improved air quality was effectively overturned in the courts after the California Restaurant Association contested it, what action do you propose taking, if any, to disincentivize the use of natural gas in buildings?
Yeah, well, I think a couple of things. One is, you know, what the Supreme Court said by my read, and I'm not a lawyer, but my read was, you can't prescribe a certain method, right? And kind of focus on the method. What you can do, however, I think what the city should do is set standards for what emissions should be from a health and safety perspective inside buildings. And then builders and others have to figure out how to meet those standards. And it may turn out that not using natural gas and electrifying buildings is how they meet the standard. So I think we just, we shift the question, and we sort of shift the method that we use to get there. And what we basically say is, we want this level of energy efficiency. We want this level of sort of health and safety in these buildings, and that's how the compliance has to happen. So that's where I would start. And then again, looking at green materials, subsidizing, you know, investments in solar and other alternate energy sources. There are other creative things we can do, but when it comes to the natural gas piece, I think we need to focus on the energy efficiency standards and set those standards as high as we think is practical.
Thank you. Candidate Katz.
I was deeply disappointed in the Ninth Circuit's decision because, as a lawyer, I felt like it was a tragic departure from the norms of law and rule of law that we've come to appreciate. And I'm very concerned about the future of our climate. I'm proud to be endorsed by the Sierra Club and to advance the Just Transition Electrification Pilot, working with the city council at the time. After a program that I piloted at East Bay Mud for Sewer Lateral, we were able to replicate that with the city of Berkeley. Where we go next, looking at the standards that the Air District has adopted. If necessary, the city of Berkeley should replicate those standards. But I think we can work with the Air District, who has created and take it further with incentives so we can get it affordable and easy for homeowners. So by making it easy for homeowners and by identifying a new funding source, we would be able to take that project further and actually be able to electrify more homes and not just depend on the more casual basis of the Inflation Reduction Act.
Okay, you had a little glitch there in your internet. I don't know if you caught that. So I have a question here that has been submitted by the audience. So it will go to candidate Katz first. Do you support Measure EE? If not, why?
I am planning on voting for Measure EE. I think it's very important that we have a ballot measure that passes this November. We had, unfortunately, a failure of the community to pass by a 2/3 margin, Measure L, two years ago. I understand the reasons why there was distrust in the community of the city council to manage such a large ballot measure. We're facing another dysfunctional situation, again, with two dueling ballot measures. But I support what's in Measure EE, so I'm voting yes. I also support Measure FF because I support what's in that measure. I'm voting yes. I don't want to wait another two years to reimagine what should be in the ballot measure. The fact is, both ballot measures don't actually get us far enough. Both ballot measures leave us approximately running in place. They're approximately the same size compared to what it really takes to get to a PCI score of 70. So I want to fix the streets. I want to make sure that there's fiscal accountability. I'm just going to vote yes on both measures to be able to do that.
Thank you. Candidate Blackaby, candidate Katz mentioned Measure FF as well, and we also have a question on that. So could you respond to supporting Measure EE and FF? And if not, why?
Yeah.
Thank you.
So the biggest challenge that we have is with the two measures, and again, I've worked around campaigns for a long time. With two measures that are very similar, there's the risk of confusion. There's the risk that voters will decide, well, look, I'm going to vote no on both. And that's absolutely the worst possible outcome. We need at least one of these measures to pass. We have a $200 million deferred maintenance hurdle on streets and sidewalks and paths that needs to be dealt with. We see this in District 6 very acutely. The street condition up here with many of our streets, especially for emergency egress and ingress, is terrible. There aren't a lot of sidewalks, and those need to be repaired. Streets are often sidewalks up here in District 6. So I have a preference for Measure FF because it does more faster, raises more money faster. It also can be used to seed projects that can be used to apply for grants, actually raise more money than is envisioned by the parcel tax itself. So again, we need both to pass. We need one to pass. And I don't want both of them to fail. I have a marginal preference for FF because I think it does more and unlocks grants.
Now, we have another question here. You have a very active audience participation, so I'm going to work this one in. And this will go to candidate Blackaby first. How will you work to protect bus routes 65 and 67, which AC Transit keeps diminishing?
Yeah. Thanks for the question. I actually was just meeting with our AC Transit Director Gene Walsh. A couple of weeks ago, we had a long conversation about this. She explained that part of the calculus that the AC Transit Board uses, basically, you know, it takes into effect the kind of income, the transportation needs of a particular area, and prioritizes equity. And all those are very good things and important things, and that should be, those should be key drivers of where bus service runs and how frequently it runs and schedules. But what they don't take into account, which I think we should, are things around emergency access, fire safety. The fact is, up here in the hills, we have too many cars parked on too narrow streets, and having better public transit will unlock streets. It will make it more possible for people not to have to drive and for us to move cars off of the streets and get them out of the hills. So even, you know, so what I was talking to Gene Walsh about was like, we should at least have a plank in that algorithm for safety for emergency access and make that part of the algorithm they use to prioritize routes. We need more frequent routes.
Candidate Katz.
Thanks. I've been working on this issue for well over a year. I'm proud to be endorsed by AC Transit Director Gene Walsh and Barc Director Rebecca Saltzman. And I'm the only candidate who's written to the AC Transit Board about this issue and has spoken at the AC Transit Board. When I dug into the data, the data around Realign, I went and I found out that AC Transit is running nine other service lines that are not as cost-effective as Lines 65 and 67. They're actually not justifying this based on the data. AC Transit is an agency that, like many, many agencies, they're going to be responsive to cost-effectiveness metrics, performance measures. And another one of those performance measures is equity. I think it would be important, I agree with Brent, that AC Transit should be taking into account our very unique access egress issues. I'm not confident that AC Transit will. I will talk with AC Transit about ways to better look at equity, not just stereotyping the hills as a place with only rich people. We have to amplify the voice of the bus riders and the seniors and the caregivers to get attention.
Okay, thank you very much. Um it's pretty tricky to add these questions in here. We are doing great. So we'll move to candidate Blackaby. Um no, candidate Katz. In District Six, there are ongoing issues with road maintenance, as many streets are in poor condition. Street signs are broken or in disrepair. Graffiti is left uncovered. The bathrooms in the parks are ugly, and several streets lack proper walkways due to excessive street parking. With regard to the city's aging infrastructure, what is the city doing right and what should be improved upon?
Well, it it is much easier to think about what needs to be improved upon. I was just thinking about my last uh walk through uh Cragmont Rock Park where the bathroom is a porta potty. Uh and 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 the the original bathroom is is uh unfortunately mothballed. Uh we have walking paths that are uh home to hazardous brush. Uh we we just simply need to do our jobs. The city needs to do its job. Uh what I will do is take stock, uh walk the streets, actually find out what needs to be done and uh get this in pri- in priority order, get it costed out, and make sure that there is a a maintenance order for each and every one of those. Now, what what I expect and and do know is that the city is already aware of many of these problems. What we need to do is put safety first, make sure that anything that that causes a imminent uh risk to to loss of life or property, that that be prioritized. Uh but then make sure that we are on a sustainable track to funding these improvements to be able to address our infrastructure. I've been doing this for decades at East Bay Mud, making sure that we're actually raising the money to get the job done.
Thank you. Candidate Blackaby.
I'll say, in addition to what we talked about with fire safety and what we talked about with home insurance, everyone I talked to has got some comment about uh street safety, speeding cars, unsafe driving in the hills. Again, we have a unique environment where we have a lot of narrow streets, small streets. We also, from Grizzly Peak to Highway twenty-four, have a very popular pathway to get people in and out of the city. And with Google Maps and sort of other technology, people are figuring out how to sort of navigate through District Six to get to and from Highway twenty-four. So every, I've talked to many people who need and are asking for safety improvements in their neighborhoods, stop signs, speed bumps, reduced speed. Uh Councilmember Wengraps already been working with city staff on safety along Marin Avenue, where we've seen again too many pedestrian incidents. So I would continue to amplify all of that work. I would continue to be an input from our constituents in District Six to Public Works and work with Public Works to sort of prioritize the traffic studies and the work that needs to get done, because we have a lot of needs up here and we're often overlooked. And these need to be priorities.
Next question goes to candidate Blackaby, Blackaby first. Some voters feel that there's a lack of transparency and don't know how the city is spending funding. Do you agree or disagree that there's a transparency problem? And if there is a problem, what steps will you take to address it?
Thanks for the question. I promise I didn't write it, but this is absolutely something I think we can do a better a job at. As I mentioned in my opening, this is something I'd want to do in the first year. As a small business person who's data-driven, metrics-driven, and gold-driven, um this is something we need to be doing across the 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 city government. Uh not from the perspective of we need to be cutting programs, but from the perspective of people in Berkeley are very generous with their time, with their tax dollars. They want to solve problems and they're willing to invest in those things if they see that the city is doing work. But I think we're reaching a breaking point. Um and I do have some concerns with all the ballot measures this fall because I'm hearing from people like, well, do we really need this? So my commit would would be, let's identify the top twelve priorities as a city. Let's create our dashboard that says, how much fuel are reducing in the hills? How many new miles of street are being paved? How many new units of affordable housing are being produced? Let's pick all of the things that we want to track, report on it, set those goals, and then show that the investments that we are making are paying off. And if they're not, but we need to dig in a little bit deeper, but we need that transparency to to be able to measure. We we have to measure what we, uh we have to manage what we measure. We have to measure those things and then be more transparent.
Candidate Katz.
I'm I'm deeply concerned that we don't have a culture of performance evaluation and and evaluation based on metrics uh throughout the city. Uh at East Bay Mud, what uh what our agency does is we have a series of key performance indicators that we grade ourselves on. And we track it every year and we do, as a board, evaluate, are these the key performance indicators that we expect that our customers want? We need to do the same thing at Berkeley. And uh that may be similar to the concept of of a dashboard, but I I I would go very specific into ensuring that we are uh fixing a certain number of miles of streets per year, that we are achieving a PCI average of of a certain uh number by a certain date. So identifying those goals and and having meaningful progress towards each goal each year. I think that's what what our our voters expect and and deserve. Uh I have struggled to actually get staff answers, depending on the commission uh and depending on the department. I think our fire department is doing an excellent job, but I have had concerns that that we're not really getting uh across all of our departments, those performance measures and 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 ways of of self-evaluation.
Hey, our next question, we'll go to candidate Katz first. What will be your approach to addressing our local affordable housing crisis and work on a regional level?
First, I was very disappointed to not see Regional Housing Bond uh get on the ballot this year. I think it it would be so important to make sure that all cities in the region are contributing uh to an effort that that will bring the Bay Area as a whole towards addressing our affordable housing crisis. Uh I'm very glad that Berkeley has passed an Affordable Housing Bond, Measure O, uh that has not expired yet. There is still a another uh one, one or two more funding rounds expected uh from from Measure O. But we do need to start thinking about a renewal, um because we we know that Measure O is not going to alone to solve our our affordable housing uh crisis. Uh having worked for an affordable housing developer and having served on the zoning commission, I know that we have a lot of work to do uh to be able housing needs. I support the the plan in our our housing element as a city to be able to build nine thousand new units over the next eight-year cycle. Uh but also to include affordable housing within it.
Thank you. Candidate Blackaby.
I support an all-of-the-above approach to building more housing and more affordable housing in Berkeley. Uh we do have a goal of eighty-nine hundred units by twenty thirty-one, according to our housing element, and we're not going to find, there's no one silver bullet that's going to get us there. We need to continue uh adding dense, more dense housing near transit and on key arterials where the infrastructure can support it. I support the missing middle proposal, which adds more gentle density in high-resource neighborhoods. We do live in a fire zone in District Six. Um so we 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 have some limitations to what we can do in District Six. We need to solve those fire issues and the evacuation issues quickly, as quickly as we can, so that we can be in a position to evaluate what our contribution can make. But again, we need to be looking at all of these elements. I also, from again, going across District Six, there are a lot of people here who are small homeowners, small landlords, have in-law units, ADUs. They're concerned uh about the restrictions and they they want to basically participate. We need to encourage them and sort of reduce the bureaucracy and make it more possible for more of this inventory to come online. There's hundreds of units that don't require more development if we encourage uh small homeowners to do the right thing.
So we have another question here that has been submitted by an attendee, and that will go to candidate Blackaby first. What is your assessment of the state and city's rollout of the efforts to remove encampments established by unhoused people?
Yeah. Um I support a humane approach to homelessness. I strongly support the city's Housing First approach. That is the right thing to do from a city perspective. It's the right thing to do from a human rights perspective. It's also the right way to deliver service to people that need help. Um getting them in a more stable housing environment where we can then provide mental health care treatment, um drug uh treatment, uh job training and other services. That's that's the way to do it. However, we also know that there are, there are folks and there are encampments that after repeated offers of housing and all of these relationships and time that that city staff have invested trying to build relationships and build trust to bring people into temporary and ultimately permanent housing, there are some intractable situations. Uh so I support what Councilmember Kestrel Wani and 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 the City Council passed recently to say, look, housing first. But if there are fire hazards, public health hazard, uh crime hazards um in some of these encampments, then the city has an obligation to do the right thing by all of the city and and break up those encampments. I I support that if it's housing first.
Candidate Katz.
Uh first, I think it's important to recognize that homelessness is is a social problem. It's a problem that the the city has a responsibility to help address. Uh it it the solution ultimately is housing and mental health services. But we we need to protect pu- public safety as as a priority. I've taken action on this. Uh when I was serving as Board President of East Bay Mud, uh I I consulted with the Oakland Police Department to make sure that we wouldn't have a fire safety disaster right next to the methane digester at the wastewater treatment plant that could have exploded uh the a a good portion of West Oakland. Uh so we 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 took care of fire safety risks uh in that in that type of situation. And i- in that vein, I do support what the City Council has adopted uh to allow uh for removal of encampments as a last resort. Uh but what we need to do is make sure that we're spending our our revenue. I strongly urge uh passage of Measure W to renew the transfer tax uh to make sure that we have continued funding for homelessness services uh so that we're able to uh improve these programs and make sure that we are able to help people rehabilitate and and not just move the problem around the city.
Thank you. Hey, our next question will go to candidate Katz. What will you do to ensure districts work together comprehensively so different needs are seriously considered when voting on policy that will impact all residents?
And I'm assuming that this refers to City Council districts, not uh our special districts and and school districts. But um I, you know, what my my mentor supervisor Keith Carson um was supporting me in this race. He he told me once that uh residents expect for local government to work together. We we just don't expect for uh the the city to be in a in one corner and the county to be in another and East Bay Mud in this other corner and and the state agencies over there. Residents just want a government that works. And I know firsthand that uh, you know, we we need for our 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 city council members to be uh cooperating with each other, work as a team to to be able to address our common needs. From a voter's perspective, uh a resident's perspective, these are invisible lines. And so uh you know, having lived in Berkeley for twenty-six years and worked on problems uh from a number of city commissions and representing Berkeley on the East Bay Mud Board, um I I will be able to work together with uh with my colleagues. I'm uh going into this uh campaign endorsed by a majority of the Berkeley City Council and our current mayor Jesse Aragorn. Uh I look forward to uh being a cooperative with my colleagues.
Thank you. Candidate Blackaby.
Look, I think there's three elements to this problem. It's a process problem. Uh it's a human problem. Um well, those we'll start with those two. On the process side, I think, again, arriving at a common set of goals and priorities for the city, as we've been talking about, being data-driven and agreeing on the things that we want to get done, gives us sort of a unified mission. Uh a second part of that would be, it's probably about time uh to do a new strategic plan for the city. Um like, what are our goals as a as a city moving forward, right? Um and I think if 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 we do sort of that heavy lifting and that cooperation and some of that sort of goal-setting together so that we have more common ground and so that we have sort of a common set of goals that we're working towards, it makes it easier to kind of be moving in the same direction. Right now, I feel like we all have a whole set of different priorities in each district. It has a different set of priorities. We need to figure out how to unify that and find the common ground as a city. So I think part of that strategic planning uh and part of that is uh is process, is then setting those goals and metrics and being laser-focused on, are we achieving the goals that we set? And if we're not, why not? And let's fix them. The third part then is on the human level. Um I also have been uh endorsed by a majority of the City Council. Relationships, trust, communication. You know, there are some limitations to what you can do outside council meetings, but building good one-on-one relationships with colleagues, which is something I've done throughout my career, is important because then people trust that you're coming from a place of goodwill uh and and we're all trying to do the right thing.
Thank you. Sorry, but I need to watch that minute, that red light. Candidate Blackaby, the next question goes to you first. Some residents do not feel safe reporting incidents of unprofessional or discriminatory I'm sorry, discriminatory police officer behavior to the Police Accountability Board because they fear retaliation. What would be your strategy to address this longstanding concern?
Well, look, I've served on the Police Accountability Board and it does amazing work. It's important work for the city. It is the key body that provides citizen oversight of the Police Department. Uh and it's got a long history. We've been groundbreakers in this work in the Police Review Commission and now the Police Accountability Board. Uh I can tell you that every complaint that goes to the Police Accountability Board, whether it's a policy complaint or a personnel complaint, is thoroughly investigated. There's a team of investigators that do the work, that interview everyone, brings a report back to the Police Accountability Board. We meet in closed session to consider it. And if we feel like the complaint has merit, we we organize a hearing and have a panel where we we ask the tough questions and recommend discipline for those officers. So we have a strong process. What I think we could do better is encourage and communicate members of with members of the public to take advantage of this opportunity and the rights that they do have. I think people need to know that this is a path that's available to them. It's critical. And and honestly, and the Police Department wants this as well. This helps them as well to know for the public to know that there's accountability and a process for this.
Thank you. Candidate Katz.
Oh, I think it's very important that we have a Police Accountability uh uh Board. It it's uh it's essential, especially as we've seen i- incidents around the country and tha- and and thankfully, we have not seen uh that that level of um officer-involved shooting uh that that's affected Berkeley. And I think what what's uh what's good about the Police Accountability Board is that it's able to foster uh a culture of of accountability, a a culture of uh respect uh between the the officers and the community. And what what we need to emphasize is that retaliation from uh uh any party. Uh but I I believe that the question here is calling for uh fear of retaliation from officers, that that simply ca- will not be tolerated. So thinking about the mechanisms for our retaliation to potentially occur uh and identifying what kinds of protective measures are available. Uh I think that's something to explore and to consider what could happen. Uh there are, there are risks to allowing uh purely anonymous complaints. Officers deserve uh to be able to have a record uh when when being presented with evidence. Uh but but I think it's important to to make sure that these mechanisms are being effective.
Okay, it, this next question will be our last one, so that we will end on time. And this question goes to candidate Katz. What will be your approach to cultivating inclusion and hearing different perspectives when developing public policy and new programs?
Thank you for the question. I think it's so important that we be inclusive in in the way the City Council and and the way each council member develops uh policies and programs. Uh we have, we have a lot of important work to do in the city from uh making sure that our fire safety uh i- i- is is taken care of, making sure that we're moving moving forward uh with protecting our our public health and safety, making sure that we're fixing our streets, uh dealing with our affordable housing crisis and addressing homelessness. We have so many problems and challenges facing Berkeley that it's very important that we listen. Um I think it's uh it it's it's challenging to be able to actually listen to members of the public when you only have one minute. Gosh, I'm trying to get my views across and I'm running out of time in just one minute. So I think, I think we need to have workshops where people don't have to be out of breath just to get their ideas across. I'll read the packet. Uh I've served on uh an elected board for eighteen years and appointed office for fourteen years. I read my packet, I do my work, uh and I'll I'll meet with people outside of the meetings to actually have dialogues and learn about the issues. So um I I keep an open mind and I'll be accessible to you.
Candidate Blackaby.
Well, what I've learned from my last twenty-five years of work as a small business person is, um you know, inclusion doesn't just happen, right? Diversity doesn't just happen. And and there are plenty of environments uh in this community, across the Bay Area and others, that again, if left to their own devices, you're going to look uh pretty homogeneous. So it takes effort, right? It takes outreach. It takes a concerted plan to say, I want to hear from those voices. Because uh without that sort of active outreach and seeking out alternative viewpoints, we've seen it on the City Council already. You're going to hear from the same people over and over and over again. And that's not representative of the whole community. We have to seek it out. So it would be a high priority of me and my team, one, that my team represents the sort of diversity and kind of inclusion standards that we expect as a city. So I want that represented on my team. And I want to create opportunities, meetings, outreach to communities on a regular basis where we go and look beyond the usual suspects who come to the council meeting to find folks who may not have that kind of time to come to a meeting, but who have issues that need to be and viewpoints that need to be considered. So I think it's being active and seeking out that input.
So you both have done a terrific job. I said at this beginning, I thought these were really tough questions. So before the candidates give their closing statements, I have a few remarks. So before the candidates give their closing statements, I have a few remarks on behalf of the League of Women Voters, Berkeley, Albany, and Emeryville. Thank you to the candidates for running for office and your participation this evening. I also want to thank the candidates for engaging in democracy. For further information about upcoming forums, the candidates, pros and cons, and positions on ballot measures, please visit the League's website, L W V B A E dot org or votersedge.org slash C A. We invite you to join the League to help us engage voters and defend democracy. We can do so much more than voter registration and education. Visit our website and social media accounts at L W V B A E. The last day to register to vote is October twenty-first this year. You can register to vote online at the Secretary of State's website, S O S dot C A dot gov. All California active registered voters will receive a vote-by-mail ballot for the November fifth general election. Your county elections office will begin mailing ballots by October seventh. Vote-by-mail ballots can be returned by mail at a drop-off location or your county elections office. Ballot drop-off locations will open on October eighth. Since Alameda County is a voter's choice county, both centers will be open for early in-person voting beginning on October twenty-sixth. Vote-by-mail ballots must be postmarked on or before Election Day and received by November twelfth, twenty twenty-four. So now the candidates will make closing statements. We'll reverse the order that we began with. Each candidate will give a closing statement of two minutes. Candidate Katz.
Thank you, Joe, and thank you to the League of Women Voters for bringing us together to talk with the public. I'm ready to bring my twenty, over twenty years of experience here in local government and twenty-six years living in Berkeley to make Berkeley's life better. As your City Council Member, my three main priorities will be fire safety. Our homes in District Six are at high risk of wildfires. We can't afford to be complacent. I'll push for vigilant vegetation management, starting with removing hazardous trees and invasive species and ensuring that our police, fire, and paramedic teams have the resources they need to meet critical response times. Safety on our streets is non-negotiable, and I'll champion smarter public safety tools, including mental health crisis units to protect our community. Reinvesting in our infrastructure and our streets is a critical priority. Berkeley streets and sidewalks are in serious disrepair, creating unsafe situations across the city. We need to prioritize reinvestment in our infrastructure, and I'm ready to work hard to ensure that funding goes to the areas that need it the most. My experience managing aging water systems gives me the expertise to address these urgent maintenance needs effectively and efficiently. And finally, ensuring access to hospital services. Berkeley cannot become a hospital desert. With all debates at risk of closure, I've developed a plan to keep full-service hospital care in our city. Our community, especially seniors and new mothers, deserves access to lifesaving medical services. I will work closely with the mayor and city council to make sure that we aren't left without the healthcare, the essential healthcare that our city needs. I've already accomplished so much for Berkeley in the twenty-plus years that I've been serving in public office. As your East Bay MUD Director for the last eighteen years, I've tripled the rate of replacing our aging water systems and our pipes, and I'll do the same thing and bring that same can-do attitude to our streets. I've worked to make sure that our thirty thousand acres of watershed land have been well managed and that we've been removing eucalyptus and brush to make sure that we can stay safe. And I'll make sure that we are developing that plan here in the community to make sure that we're ensuring that we have a well-managed vegetation and that we're protecting our public safety.
Thank you. Candidate Blackaby, your closing statement, please.
Thank you, and thanks again to the League of Women Voters for having us tonight. Andy, it was great to be with you as well. I'm running for City Council because I'm committed to going to work every day for the people of Berkeley and the people of District Six. I want to solve problems and get things done on the issues that matter. Housing, climate, streets and transportation, crime and public safety, wildfire safety. I'm someone who puts in the work in everything that I do as a dad, as a community leader, as a small business person, and as a candidate. And that's what I'll do on City Council. You know that, because that's what I've done through my entire career. I've lived in District Six for twenty years. I know the district well. I know my neighbors well. I know the issues well, and I'm focused on making things better for everyone here in District Six. This is personal for me and for my family. I want to help make Berkeley better, safer, and more affordable. A place where everyone is truly welcome and where we can all live and thrive. Where my kids' teachers, our police officers, our firefighters, our union members can afford to live and work and raise their own families. I'm committed to doing this work. That's why I'm proud to have received five of the biggest and most important endorsements in this district from our Senator Nancy Skinner and Assembly Member Buffy Wicks, because they know I'll fight to make housing more affordable and accessible across Berkeley. From our longtime council member Susan Wengraff, who is retiring this year after more than thirty years of service to District Six and knows our district better than anybody. From the Berkeley firefighters, because I have a commitment to addressing the wildfire threat and keeping Berkeley safe. From the Berkeley Democratic Club, because they know I'm a proud Democrat who rolls up his sleeves and gets things done. I've personally knocked on more than three thousand to five thousand doors in our district, and I learned so much from every conversation, which will make me a better representative on the City Council. Let me tell you, people in Berkeley have lots of opinions. I've heard a lot of them on doorsteps, at house parties, at meet and greets. But those are the stories I'll bring with me to the City Council. I'll put in the work as District Six's next council member, because I care deeply about the future of our district and our community. I would really appreciate your vote on or before November fifth. Thanks again for having me tonight.
Thank you. Please join me in a round of applause for the candidates. Thank you all for attending and making the extra effort to be an educated voter. I encourage you all to visit vote four-one-one. Both candidates have added their information there, and that will give you more insights into the district race that we talked about tonight. Thank you very much, and please vote on November fifth. Good night.
Good night. Thanks.